I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Dean. Roll call, please, Sienna.
Councilmember Glazer.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Protem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here. Thank you, Sienna. Did we receive any public comments before our meeting started?
I did not receive public comments before the meeting started, but I do have a sign ready to go.
Okay. Why don't we put that up for a second? Maybe we could go ahead and just leave that up while I read a couple of proclamations if that wouldn't be too distracting. So if anyone feels like they want to call in, please use the meeting ID and the password there or call the phone number and join us. So our first proclamation tonight is a Great American Smokeout, November 19th, 2020. Whereas the American Cancer Society encourages all tobacco users to join the Great American Smokeout and quit tobacco for at least one day. And whereas smoking remains the leading cause of preventable death in the United States. And whereas tobacco companies are attempting to block the new statewide ban on flavored tobacco that was designed to prevent kids from getting addicted. And whereas local surveys show our retail environment is filled with tobacco products and even stores with pharmacies providing healthcare services can sell tobacco products, giving a mixed message that tobacco use is safe. And whereas the predominance of tobacco products makes it easy for youth to start smoking and harder for smokers to quit. And whereas free resources help people quit smoking vaping. And whereas on Thursday, November 9th, there will be a free quit kit giveaway at Eureka Natural Foods on Broadway from noon to 3:00. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of Fortuna and supports the American Cancer Society's Great American Smokeout on Thursday, November 19th, 2020, and encourages all residents who use tobacco products to consider that they do not have to stop smoking in one day. Just start with one day. Sign the second day of November 2020 at the City of Fortuna, State of California, by Mayor Shumong. And who do we have receiving this? Sienna, if you want to take the public comment down, thank you. We have a couple of people here for this proclamation. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you very much. We were hoping that we had a youth, Megan, to join us. And I'm actually, I think I'm going to read, if you don't mind, what she was going to say. Maybe technical difficulties forgive us. So, thank you, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Megan. I'm a high school student. We are part of the Tobacco Education Network. Vaping is an important issue for teenagers in our community. Many of my peers have taken up vaping because they're bored or are peer pressured. Many students tend to vape at school dances. This is why we asked Megan to come. She had an interesting story. Last year, she went to a dance, a high school dance, and she said that the smoke from the vaping was so thick, it was like there was a fog machine.
Michelle can just join us.
Where is she here?
Yes.
Oh, where is she? Would love to have Megan speak. Megan, are you with us? There you are. I just read your piece.
She is.
Can you, do you want to, do you want to elaborate? I don't know if you know that I just read your piece. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I will. Yeah, I know that a lot of my peers have taken up vaping as a form of passing time or just because they're bored. Yeah, as Michelle was saying, I went to a, one of my dances. Everyone vapes there because it's dark and so they don't think that they're going to get in trouble. But it's become recently so bad that the vape smoke is so thick that it looks like there's fog machines and it's not good.
Thank you, Megan. And that was even despite all the screening that they tried to do at the door. So that was a compelling story. So, so my name is Michelle Postman and I'm with the Tobacco Education Network. And we work to prevent exposure to secondhand smoke and nicotine addiction. Education is important, but it takes all of us really to help a community to stay healthy and help people quit and prevent nicotine addiction from the start. So for example, more than 54 cities in California have completely eliminated the sale of flavored tobacco products, including menthol, to prevent youth from starting use of nicotine to begin with. And I'm going to hand it over to Jay McCubrey.
And thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the proclamation this evening. My name is Jay McCubrey. I'm project director with Tobacco Free North Coast. And as Michelle mentioned, local policies are proven effective in reducing smoking and vaping. The state of California recently adopted a law to eliminate the sale of flavored tobacco. That made big tobacco angry. Within three days, they filed the referendum to overturn the law and filed the lawsuit against the state of California. But the 54-plus local laws to eliminate flavored tobacco still stand. We can take action now to prevent youth from vaping. Learn more, please, by checking out our website at tobaccofreenorthcoast.org. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
You are very welcome. Thanks for being here. Our next proclamation is National American Indian Heritage Month. In recognition of National American Indian Heritage Month, November 2020. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples. And whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And whereas the time has come to stop suppressing the memories of crimes committed against American Indians by the seizing and occupying of their land. And whereas historic atrocities committed against the tribes living in Humboldt County are recently coming to light. And whereas American Indian customs and traditions, which were once suppressed or now respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and expanded by, was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. Whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned throughout the nation. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of Fortuna does hereby proclaim November 2020 as National American Indian Heritage Month in the city and urge all our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Sign the second day of November, City of Fortuna, by Mayor Shumong. Who is here for this one? Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please. Hi. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm Virginia Howard Mullen, the Regent of the Eel River Valley DAR. And we have an American Indian Committee nationally. And the NSDAR, American Indians Committee, is entrusted to the continuing education of the history and culture of this community, as well as the support of the educational and cultural pursuits of Native Americans. And we just want to thank you for having this proclamation tonight.
You're welcome. Thanks for being here.
You bet.
Our next item is the presentation and discussion on the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund, REMIF, and the merger with Public Agency Risk Sharing Authority of California, which is ParsAC, to create the California Intergovernmental Risk Authority, CIRA. Say it, Sierra. So, Sienna?
I can give a brief introduction for Amy. Sienna Emmons is our representative of the board and she's been doing a great job on that. And I fill in as alternate. So that's one of those things Sienna really helps with. But tonight, we have Amy Northam here. Amy's the general manager of REMIF and started that position in 2017. Since becoming the general manager, Amy has really brought a high level of professionalism to the organization and really made significant improvements to the transparency and fiscal soundness of the organization. And for those of you who don't know, REMIF was formed in 1976 and is a self-insured pool that consists of 15 cities, including the city of Fortuna. And so Amy's going to talk more about the next steps of the organization and I really appreciate Amy being here to do so. So with that, I'll hand it over to you, Amy.
Great. Thank you, Merritt, for the introduction. And thank you for allowing me to come and present tonight. So I actually have a formal presentation. But a lot of times when I, when I mention to people that I, that I'm in insurance or I'm about to talk about insurance, everyone's eyes kind of glaze over. And I think the only way to make that a little less interesting is to throw up a PowerPoint presentation. So if there's, unless there's any objections, I'm going to just talk tonight and share what, share what this is all about. So my name is Amy Northam and I am the general manager of REMIF. And I'm here just to discuss the merger of REMIF with another organization just like us to create a new organization called CIRA. So I'm going to present this in kind of a who, what, when, where, why type of presentation. And certainly welcome any questions as well. So who, who is REMIF? Well, rather than purchase commercial insurance through a commercial insurance carrier, Fortuna has partnered with 14 other cities and towns to pool their money to pay for liability and workers' comp claims. So we collect the money, we pot the money, we put it in a big pool, and we use those funds to pay for claims. And all of the cities contribute to that shared fund. And that fund is more commonly referred to as a pool. Fortuna is a member of the pool named the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund, or REMIF. REMIF is governed by our Board of Directors, compromised with one member from each member of the pool. So every member has an equal vote in the, in the, on the board. Public entity pools are fundamentally different from conventional insurance. The primary purpose of any pool is to manage and reduce underlying risks to the benefit of all of the member entities. Commercial insurers exist primarily to finance losses and make profits. We are a public entity. I am a public employee. So we don't have profit, we don't have taxes. So that ends up keeping our costs lower than commercial insurers as well. So what is REMIF? As Merritt mentioned, we're a public entity pool representing 15 small to medium-sized cities. We're in five different counties. We're in Napa County, Sonoma County, Lake, Mendocino, and Humboldt County. Generally speaking, we run up and down the 101 corridor. We were formed in 1976 with the mission to provide workers' comp coverage in response to increasing and unaffordable commercial rates. Coverage was expanded in the mid-1980s to include liability and other services. And since then, we've added other lines of coverage. We also have a self-insured health plan. ParsAC, on the other hand, is a public entity pool representing 34 small to medium-sized cities. They were formed in 1986 with the mission to provide liability coverage. So we started out as workers' comp and added liability. They did the opposite. They started out with liability and then added workers' comp. They added workers' comp in 1990. And since that time, other lines of coverage have been added. So ParsAC and REMIF both provide a pooled liability program, a pooled workers' compensation program. And then we get together and purchase group property coverage, auto physical damage coverage, cyber, and some other benefits like crime, crime policy and whatnot. And as I mentioned before, the, the main difference between the two is that REMIF has a self-insured health program and ParsAC does not. However, the two pools are remarkably similar. We share a similar philosophy. We both focus on financial stability. We have conservative funding and investment philosophies. We have discussions at our boards that are both constructive and collaborative. They, we encourage participation from our members and balance the member interests with those of the entire pool. We also have a similar culture. Both pools believe the member, the pool is member-owned, member-governed, and member-driven. And we both exist to serve our members, like the city of Fortuna. We are similar in that we both serve small to medium-sized cities and towns. And we share a similar footprint in Northern California, although ParsAC has presence throughout the state, including in Southern California. And for example, REMIF has Fortuna and Eureka. ParsAC has Blue Lake and Ferndale. So our footprint actually overlaps in many areas. So given the similarities between these two agencies, REMIF and ParsAC explored a strategic partnership. It had started with maybe just sharing training resources. It could have been anything from just sharing training resources to a full-blown merger. And what's ultimately led to this exploration of a strategic partner is indeed a merger between the two organizations. And rather than one pool merging into another, like REMIF merging into ParsAC or ParsAC merging into REMIF, we're actually creating a new pool called the California Intergovernmental Risk Authority, or CIRA, and both pools will feed into CIRA. So why would we do this? If I could summarize the why of why we're doing this, it's really to add both depth and breadth to both organizations and to realize savings. There's going to be a great benefit in sharing resources and sharing expenses. And we can draw on the strengths of both pools. There will be built-in succession planning. There will be more robust, stable programs and more training resources. The intent is to create, both to create redundancy and eliminate redundancy. So what I mean by that is, you know, we're, we're two pools kind of working, doing the same projects on the same timelines in separate worlds. But if we can combine to eliminate redundancies such as the need for, to hire, both of us to hire an auditor, both of us to hire an actuary, both of us to do claims audits, there will be a reason to eliminate redundancies. At the same time, it'll create redundancies because we'll have redundancies in staffing and redundancies in programs. We'll also have economies of scale growing from 15 members to 50 members. And while a merger will have realized savings to both members of the pool, at least that's what we anticipate, the intent of the merger is really to have long-term stability and sustainability. We would add both depth and breadth to our agencies with the singular goal of better serving our members. While the intent is to merge the programs, there also is an interest to have the self-insured health plan remain under the care, custody, and control of REMIF, at least for the time being. So the documents that you will be presented at the next city council meeting reflect exactly that. There'll be a set of documents to create CIRA and a set of documents to allow REMIF to exist for purposes of the health plan. A few years down the line, we may end up merging the health plan, but for now, we're going to keep that separate and under REMIF's control. So what's the cost? What's the fiscal impact of it? The merger will consolidate the operations and expenses of both pools. CIRA will work towards eliminating redundant expenses, which will lower long-term operating costs. Consolidating operations will also achieve greater economies of scale and improve service delivery. CIRA will be in a better position to leverage its larger size for better services, for better rates, and better coverage, both with service providers and with our excess insurance carriers. A larger organization will also result in more predictable funding and forecasts, which will reduce the likelihood of future assessments. The merged organization will be more fiscally viable and provide greater long-term stability and sustainability. However, we are not merging to save money. That is not our primary goal. While hopefully that will be a byproduct, the intent is to create more stability and more sustainability for our members. So the, this is going to happen July 1st of 2021. And that seems far away, but in the government world, that's actually right around the corner. So we're taking aggressive steps to make that happen towards, on July 1 of 2021. And my stop at Fortuna is one of the ways to make that happen. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Amy. Does anyone have questions? Jeremy?
My question is, where did this need arise? Like, was there a committee? Or was there the general manager of REMIF and the general manager of ParsAC saw, saw a way to do it better? Or was there a committee forum that brought back this recommendation to you? Or did you see opportunities you missed out on because of our size?
That's a great question and thank you for asking that. So yes to all of the above. So how this happened, this started probably about close to two years ago. And ParsAC came knocking on REMIF's door and said, hey, we've got this idea. Let's look at creating a strategic partnership between us. And again, it could, it could range anything from just sharing training resources, which we're doing now, to a full-blown merger. And we, I brought that forward, this, this idea forward to the Board of Directors, which both Sienna and Merritt sit on. And the Board of Directors gave me direction to explore this, explore this partnership. And after some exploration, it came back that it was, I was given direction to proceed with a merger. As a result of that direction, we created what we're calling a transition committee, which consists of members of REMIF and members of ParsAC. And we meet about once a month to talk about the various programs and all kinds of funding issues. Aaron, who is on the phone, is, will be a member of our Transition Finance Committee. He is REMIF's treasurer. And so we will, we created a subcommittee of the transition committee to look at the financing piece of it as well. So yes, we did, it did start with the general managers and then it grew, grew to the board, received direction from the board. And now we have this wonderful transition committee and this wonderful finance committee put together to see this happen.
I, I saw in the Q and As where each organization will carry their own incidents prior to the merger. Do you have a plan on how that's going to work out to conclusion? Or is that more than I need to know?
No, I, I think it's a great question, absolutely fair one as well. So that's, that's an important, an important piece to this merger. So all of our claims that are in existence currently, we call those tail claims. But it's really just all claims that are in existence right now will continue to be either REMIF's or ParsAC's. We're not going to merge our prior liabilities. So we're only going to merge moving forward, claims moving forward, and that date again is seven one of twenty one. So the, the way we'll handle that is the REMF board will still have authority over those old claims. And then the CERA board will have authority over the new claims. Now, a few dare, few years down the line, if mo, if the majority of the, of the older claims have closed up and, and we're done with, we may look at merging all of the prior liabilities. But for now, we're just going to go forward, uh on a go forward basis of seven one of twenty one.
So basically the same thing, like, again, maybe more than I need to know, but where's the money for CERA going to be? Is it, is it started at zero balance on July first? And then all the money that we've already built up in the REMF JPA is going to be used for those claims?
That's exactly correct. So starting seven one of twenty one, uh CERA will have exactly zero dollars in its bank account, and it will fund moving forward. So we'll fund collecting from the, from our members. And then all of the money that are in the REMF account now will pay for the prior claims.
Last question for me.
Oh, ask her.
So you, right now, you're in Sonoma, and there's going to be a Sonoma and a Sacramento um office. Is the intent to eventually, once all the majority of the claims are canceled out or concluded, to converge into one office under one name?
You know, that's, that's a great question. That's not something we've actually talked about, about what we're going to do with our buildings. Uh, REMF owns its building in Sonoma and Parsac owns its building in Sacramento. And um, the, the purpose, uh, the primary purpose for keeping both buildings right now is the staffing. So we have, the, REMF has staff here in the Sonoma area and Parsac has staff in the Sacramento area. We wanted to make sure that nobody was going to lose their job as a result of that. And I'll be honest, when this first started, when we first started exploring that, that was a possibility. That absolutely was on the table. But it's, it's, you know, it's just funny how things work out sometimes. We are a, a, actually a perfect dovetail of one another. The, we don't have, except for my position, we don't have any uh overlapping positions. We're just set up slightly different. Um, so that, the, the way that those, the way that we will dovetail together with our staff will be, will work beautifully. Um, you know, with, with remote work now, uh, we may not need a building in the future, but that's not something we're looking at right now. I think that'll be something about a year or two down the line that we'll look at and see if we, do we really need to have two buildings? Because that's, there's obviously expenses associated with that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I have some questions.
Sure.
Thank you for doing this. Um, I guess you could probably say there's always a fear of stepping into new grounds and going a direction that we normally become accustomed to. The, you stated that there are thirty four agencies in Parsac. Um, none of the report actually describes where the locations are and the size of the cities. Is that something you have available to give to us?
I do. So the, there are, uh, there, they are um also considered small to medium sized cities. So they're very similar in size to REMF. So if we had a, a um, kind of a scale of, of the sizes of the different cities, um, all the REMF cities are kind of more in the middle. They're, the REMF cities are a little bit more right around the same size, where the Parsac cities, there's some smaller ones. They have a city that has one full time employee, and then they have a very large city that has um over two hundred thousand residents. It's the city of uh Ranch of Kukumbunga. So their, their um scale is a little bit uh broader than ours, and most of our cities are right around, you know, right in the middle um as far as size goes. And our footprint in Northern California is remarkably similar. Um, as I mentioned, they have um uh Ferndale, we have Fortuna. I mean, a lot of them in Northern California are very similar. However, Parsac does have some cities in uh the Sacramento area. They have the city of Citrus Heights, the city of Grass Valley, the city of Placerville, which is a little bit uh, uh east of Sacramento. And then they have some cities down in Southern California as well, which we don't, are, are, we're limited to just five different counties, but they have some cities in Southern California as well.
So um, the pool cost, is that determined by population density?
Uh, no, there's a, there's a couple of things that go into the costs associated. What we do is we hire an actuary to look at our uh, our losses and to predict what the losses will be next year, and that's primarily what we fund from. Um, so the actuary will come up with a figure of what the estimate is needed to fund the costs for next year. And then we use that, we, we add in um additional costs as well, like we add in the administrative costs. And then on top of that, we also add in our excess liability coverage as well. So we package that all together, and then we come up with an allocation model to, to allocate those funds to the different members.
Um, I know, I know uh from past history for REMF, uh, there are a few cities that do have a lot of claims. And I'm sure they're challenging on part of the, the funding and money that REMF has to be able to uh represent those cities. For Parsac, uh, was there, they approached us. Was there a need for more revenue source to add us to them because they have so many claims? Or was it just literally a partnership by coincidence that, that uh, on a, on a good sense of, of point, rather than one side using the other to be able to benefit and balance their budget?
So that's a great question, and, and one of the things that uh both I and our board needed to look at very seriously, you know, is this, is this just a convenience uh for Parsac and their funding, or is this going to be a true partnership? And uh, the first thing we did, one of the very first things we did when we started to look at an actual merger was to have an actuarial report done combining the uh, the, the Parsac claims and the REMF claims together. So the actuary took a look at that. And we started with workers' comp. We looked at workers' comp claims first, uh, because that is by far the bigger program that we actually uh expend more costs related to workers' comp than on, on the liability side, generally speaking. Uh, but the um, the, the findings from the actuary came back, and you could really swap out one REMF city for a Parsac city. Um, the, the claims were incredibly similar. There was one of us, and I don't even remember anymore, to be honest, that was slightly higher in frequency. And there was another one, the other one of us was slightly higher in, in severity, uh, which means one of us had each claim on average was slightly higher, but the other one had slightly more claims on average. So you could very easily swap out one Parsac city for a REMF city. Uh, it was, uh, it's actually been a very interesting process to go through and see the similarities even as far as claims goes between the two. So no, we have not found that, that uh, one entity is, is taking advantage of another or anything um a- as far as the merger goes.
Is there something in place, uh, because you're going to actually have more directors once it's combined? Is there something set in place that if a city, either from Parsac or from REMF, uh, ended up being in a very abusive uh pattern that was having too many claims? Um, is there something in place that allows the board of directors to dismiss that city?
There is, and that has been exercised on, on REMF before. We, we um showed a member a door many years ago, or showed a member the door many years ago. So yes. And um, when, I, I, I mentioned that the actuary comes up with the funding that will be needed for next year, and then that number gets allocated to the members. It's not evenly divided. It's not divided by number of residents. We actually have a fairly complicated formula, and that formula takes in account um, the bad members and the good members. So those with uh loss claims that are, that have claims that are higher or more frequent than the good members, they actually pay a, a, a higher percentage. So it's a fairly complicated formula that comes up with that. So yes, that is, that absolutely is in place. And that's very important because we don't want uh one member to be putting more into the pot than they're taking out of the pot and vice versa. We don't want some members taking money out of the pot, um, more out of the pot than they put in.
Great. Thank you very much, Megan.
Absolutely.
Anyone else have questions? All right. Any more comments, Amy, to wrap it up?
I, I, I don't, other than you'll see the um, all of the documents at the next um city council meeting. And again, there's two set of documents. One for um REMF to uh, continue existing for purposes of the health plan and one for the creation of CERA.
All right. Well, thank you for being with us tonight. We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to oral comment for the public. Do you want to put our little flyer up, Siana, while we do the consent calendar and then let us know if anyone calls in? So this is a time, if you have something you would like to address the city council about, you can follow the instructions on the screen and join us um, in our Zoom meeting. Our consent calendar tonight has three items: city council minutes, report of disbursements, and number three is to continue the declaration of the assistance of a local emergency in response to coronavirus, COVID nineteen. Does anyone wish to pull anything? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Siana.
Councilmember Glazer.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
So seeing or hearing no public comment callers, we will close the public comment on the city council business. Our first item is a public hearing for unmet transit needs. Staff report, please.
Cameron Moll will be providing the staff report.
Thank you, Merritt. Good evening, City Council. Mayor Long. Uh, Cameron Moll here, the Parks and Recreation Director, uh, and also I operate the Transit Department. Um, and so this is an annual public hearing that we hold uh each year around this time. Um, so basically, the reason for this is to allow the public to make comment on our transit agency and any improvements that we might be able to make or any needs that are not being met uh for the public. Um, so in order for us to uh receive our Transportation Development Act funds or LTF, our lowest, local transportation funds from uh Humboldt County Association of Governments, otherwise known as HCOG, um, every year we have to go through this process and review those public comments and see whether or not we are meeting the needs of the public and where we can make those improvements. So essentially, um, comments will fall into uh, could fall into three different categories. Uh, the first one is that there are no unmet transit needs um for that agency. Or the second one is there are no unmet transit needs which are reasonable to meet. Uh, so basically, if they're unreasonable or maybe financially not sustainable, then they might be considered uh not reasonable to meet. Uh, and then uh, number three, if there are unmet needs uh that could be included, those would be considered reasonable to meet. So basically, uh, the SS TAC, um, which is the Safety, I don't want to get this wrong, Social Services Transportation Advisory Council, which I am a part of, uh, representing Fortuna. Each spring, we review all the agency's uh unmet transit needs or public comments and try to make improvements. So before uh HCOG will disperse the funds from the LTF, uh, we have to go through this process. Um, so basically, we're just allowing any members of the public to stand up and say uh uh any comments they might have about our transit service. Uh, typically, we don't get a whole lot of comments. Uh, typically, they are positive comments. Uh, but we want to encourage people to chime in and so that we can improve uh our transit. And just to kind of give the public a summary of our Transit Department, basically, we have Fortuna Transit System, which is a dial a ride system. Um, and we operate within the city limits of Fortuna. Uh, so we transport citizens that are fifty and over or, and/or persons with a disability. Um, and so that is not considered a fixed route service, uh, AKA where you would have bus stops, for example. Uh, so we contract with Humboldt Transit Authority, HTA, uh, so that they can operate the Redwood Transit System through Fortuna, through the county, um, for those bus stops and for that fixed route service. So a big chunk of our uh LTF funds goes to pay them. Um, I've also got Marcela May here. She's the Executive Director of HCOG available, in case I've missed anything. Marcel, if you wanted to chime in. Um, otherwise, we can just, I can answer any questions that the city council might have, uh, and then we can open it up for the public hearing.
Yeah, this is Marcela May, Executive Director for the next two months till I retire from the Humboldt County Association of Governments. Cameron did an excellent job. The only thing I would add is um, COVID has made this an unusual time. Uh, our, the transit agency's ridership is down. The last I heard, seventy percent. Um, so when we look, when unmet transit needs come up, we look to see if they're operationally feasible, if there's a road that can handle a bus and financially sustainable. With COVID nineteen social distancing, it'll be very difficult to make the finding that a new service would be financially sustainable. The law requires um ten percent fare box, which means ridership has to pay for ten percent of what the operation of the system is. So that will be very, a high hurdle because of COVID. So if um, another thing we're looking for is to hear from the public, what would bring them back to transit once the stay at home orders, order is lifted? And hopefully, I won't say things get back to normal. Um, but um, once the COVID uh pandemic is uh longer. So with that, any other questions you have, I can also assist. Thank you for getting this on the agenda tonight.
Siana, would you please put up the public all in information while we talk to the council? So we'll open the public hearing while we take council comments. So if you would like to join our meeting and our unmet transit needs, please do so. Does anyone from the council have any questions or comments for either Cameron or Marcela?
I do, Sue. Um, this is for Marcela. Uh, with the virus restrictions, the state never made any exception to meeting the ten percent ridership? Or did they just leave it status quo and leave us with a hot potato?
We are not required, or the, the transit agencies are not required to meet that during this time. But uh, this hearing is looking at twenty um, twenty one, twenty two. So the hearing we had last year is for this fiscal year, and this will be for the future year. So, I mean, with fingers crossed, we will, uh, COVID will be over then.
You betcha.
The ten percent to be back.
Great. Thanks very much, Marcela.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Anyone else have any comments?
I would just say that I have um, had opportunity to use the uh paratransit, local paratransit bus, senior bus here in Fortuna. And it's timely. Uh, the drivers are helpful and friendly. And I would use it more often. But sometimes I have those sudden quick trips and don't have an opportunity to call in the day before, which is one thing that's required, is to uh call in the day before to set up an appointment. But um, it's a good system. And I think our ridership has actually stayed pretty steady. Uh, Cameron probably knows more about that than I do, I can guarantee you. But it's a good system, and this local citizens have an opportunity uh to take part of, part in it, I think they'd be pleasantly surprised.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Siana, did anyone from the public call in?
I do see one number that is called in and listening, but I don't see a raised hand. Um, if there's a caller on the line right now that would like to speak, if you could hit star nine on your phone or use the raise hand function if you are joining us by the Zoom platform, that will let me know that you would like to make a comment. And if not, then we don't currently have anybody who'd like to make a public comment.
No response from our caller. Okay. We'll close our public hearing. Does anyone else have any comments?
I have one just out of curiosity, a question. Um, what are the normal responses to these hearings? I mean, do you hear from people that they're not being serviced in certain areas or that they have ideas to improve service?
Yeah, we actually have two examples that um, one was going to be implemented this July and uh, the Humboldt Transit Authority secured funding for a late night run for the regional system. So from McKinleyville to Fortuna. So from McKinleyville to Fortuna. And that was in response to, I think it was around 300 signatures on a petition, mostly from Humboldt State students, that indicated that the bus doesn't run late enough at night. So we were going to start as a pilot project, a late-night service. Those funds had to be redirected to keep the Humboldt Transit Authority afloat during COVID because the ridership went down so, so low. Last year, we had another finding to increase service during peak hours. So in the morning, in the evening, on the main RTS system again, when people are going and coming, going to work and coming, going home. So we were going to secure funding to do that again as a pilot project. But that is on hold due to COVID. So we will look at those two things this year as well as next year automatically.
Thank you.
And then Marcel, I wanted to mention as well, this isn't a Fortuna citizens' only opportunity to make a public comment on unmet transit needs. Is that correct? Can they contact?
Absolutely. Yes. Thank you, Cameron.
So I think they, members can just call HCOG or email HCOG if they have any public comments for unmet transit needs.
Yes, and then easy, another easy way is to go to our website. And it's www.hcag.net. Under announcements, you'll find all the information, the definitions of what an unmet need is and our criteria that we use. We also have a survey, and the survey this year is directed to the results of COVID and how to, what would get them to come back to using transit once the stay-at-home order is over.
All right. Thank you both. Any other last-minute comments?
Yes, Sue, this is Dean. In the past, there was one individual that wanted to have a shelter on Kenwood. But because the property owner owned the location where that small shelter would be located, that was not going to happen. It's hard to explain to people that what they want doesn't, doesn't, doesn't negatively impact anybody. They figure that what they want is what should happen based on us as being a public agency. The second item is, these all have to be a neutral scenario. In other words, if you're going to change the route or add new route times, that it cannot be a negative loss. It has to justify itself because of the ridership increase. And if it doesn't, it gets eliminated. And some people just do not understand that. It's a selfish one-on-one, "I want, I want," and that's just not practical in 99% of the time. But we can still listen, like we're doing tonight. Still listen to what the input is, and fortunately, we didn't have anybody send in any inputs. But anyway, thank you, Marcela, for your help.
And thank you.
Okay, thank both of you for your comments and for the information. We don't have any comments received, so do we need a motion to forward them?
I'll make a motion to forward comments received during the public hearing to HCOG for consideration for unmet transit needs.
So although we didn't have any, we still need to make our motion? Siana, do you know?
I'm going to second the motion.
Okay.
Do it.
Let's cover ourselves.
A motion and a second to forward our comments that we did not receive to HCOG.
Go forward a statement saying that we didn't receive any comments.
Perfect, okay.
Councilmember Glazer.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. All right, thank you. Our next item is the public hearing to consider an amendment of Title 17, zoning regulations of the Fortuna Municipal Code, adding Section 17.06.220, small wireless communications facilities, and amending Section 17.07.004, Administration Ordinance 2020-744. Mayor, staff report.
Yeah, Liz Shory, our Deputy Director of Community Development, will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So, yeah, this is the proposed small wireless cell facility ordinance. I'm really happy to be bringing this to you tonight. And the reason it comes before you is, you know, this is the city's effort to get in front of potential issues as these types of facilities are, you know, being developed throughout, throughout the country. And it includes a citing and design of these wireless facilities. And this is because of really just the evolving technology as the city, or as, as the wireless industry, you know, the needs grow and the technology increases. And so at this point, the city, you know, the technology has in the past been based on the tall towers, the lattice towers that, there's one of them in Fortuna on Dinsmore Drive, and they're throughout the county. And so this new technology is based on creating more, but smaller poles. They're typically placed on existing or new poles. And so there's more of them, but it fills in the gaps of, the coverage gaps and it also allows better data needs. So it's really, you know, it can, it's proposed, it can be based for 4G or 5G. It's not necessarily just for 5G. So when you see, you know, if you see these poles, it could be just for coverage and better data, but also, you know, it can be either, again, either 4G or 5G. And the reason we're bringing this now, you know, we know that this is, this is a new thing. You know, we read about it. And we have had a cell provider come to the city. And, you know, as we do over the years, it's really a frequent occurrence as, as the self, cell companies, you know, they're constantly doing research and land acquisition and things like that. So it's really a common inquiry. And in this case, the provider, US Cellular, really encouraged the city to adopt an ordinance because they, you know, they're doing their research and, you know, throughout the, throughout their areas. And this is something that's going to facilitate their process as well as the city. So we'll be able to respond to, to, you know, protecting the city's interests and also providing some certainty and some standards for the, for the companies. And they want that certainty too. So this is a city application, but, but it is, you know, has been sort of supported and encouraged by, by this provider. So let me, I'm going to project the PowerPoint and go over that. Let's see. So the purpose of the standards of this ordinance is to, what the ordinance contains, I think is really to respond, does respond to a variety of needs. Basically, it establishes design standards and performance standards. And the design standards include, you know, locational preferences and other specific, like screening, screening proposals and other design standards. And there's also locational preferences within that and the performance standards. And there's also an approval process. So that would be the, you know, discretionary, either staff or discretionary review process based on a number of factors and application requirements. So that's really the gist of it. Although it kind of looks like a long ordinance, it's really broken down into some basic, basic sections. And, you know, it's really, it's got the design standards to prevent unsightly facilities. It addresses visually sensitive areas. It provides uniform standards. And so, you know, there's some certainty, but also there's flexibility built into it. So while there's certainty, it also allows, you know, flexibility so that the applicant can, can choose, you know, how compliant they're going to be upfront. And that's going to make the approval process easier for them. And this protects neighborhoods from, you know, just haphazard, unsightly poles and antenna throughout the neighborhoods. So there are federal regulations that limit what cities and counties can do to protect themselves or to, to create standards. So the federal regulations, it's regulated by, of course, the FCC, the Federal Communication Department. And it's a variety of acts that have been adopted over the years. So the, where cities are not allowed to prohibit, prohibit cells and the facilities. Cannot prohibit them based on rate or frequency. So the FCC has adopted standards that, you know, if, if the antenna, the cells operate within that, that frequency or up to that maximum, then they may not, you know, they have to, that issue cannot be considered. And also may not just outright deny carriers or make standards over prohibitive. There's a 6409 permit that limits or prohibits cities from not allowing modifications to existing facilities. So once a facility exists, the carriers are allowed to make modifications and upgrades and things like that. So we cannot prohibit that. Local agencies may not, oh, may, sorry, may regulate design and aesthetics of facilities. They can, and this ordinance does this. It identifies discouraged and also preferred sites and locations into the design standards. And we can require the providers to provide coverage in the least intrusive manner feasible. So the standards that are proposed allow that flexibility where, you know, we, the city has some standards and they're presented. But they're, you know, ultimately, the city, you know, we have to work with the carriers and they have to work with the city to identify sites that are going to work to cover those gaps. So the small wireless facility, the reason this section is called that is it is a specific definition by the FCC. Basically, their, their 50 feet are lower or now higher than 50 feet. And then there's, you know, with up to 10% taller, higher than the adjacent structures, antenna, there's a cubic feet in volume for the antenna, volume for all of the other equipment. The radio frequency may not exceed FCC guidelines, not located on tribal lands, and not require an antenna registration. So all of those come out of this code of federal regulations that was under an act. And so that's, you know, that's the technology that's coming forward now. The city does have a communications structure ordinance that's for taller than 50 feet, and that's still in place. So this is really for the smaller, the pole, basically the pole design. So what the code does, it identifies proposed location standards. And it has preferred and discouraged. So the preferred locations are, would fall into a principally permitted category. And the discouraged locations, if the carrier wanted to, or actually would need to demonstrate that they need those sites in order to fill the, fill the gaps, those would go to either the Planning Commission or the council, depending on some other factors. So the preferred locations are alleys in the non-residential zones, city-owned parcels and right-ofways, and not, in non-residential zones. And the discouraged locations include residential zones and then, you know, kind of the more sensitive commercial areas in town, including Main Street, 12th Street, and the Riverwalk area. And then if they are to be located in a discouraged location, then they would be approved at a publicly noticed hearing. And they would still need to, they would need to demonstrate that they need that site so that it's the least intrusive means possible. And the design standards are all, again, they fall into that same kind of format where if, you know, if they comply with the design standards, then they can avoid a public hearing and public notice. So the standards would encourage least public visibility. A stealth design that creates, kind of disguises the, you know, the antenna and, you know, kind of blends them into the existing environment. It can be disguised as a light pole. They can be architecturally part of a building or screened with, you know, within landscaping and things of that nature. The equipment would need to be undergrounded or screened in some manner. The height would need to meet the height standards of the zone within which it's located. Would need to meet setbacks, co-location. So are there existing poles or cell facilities on which they could be located? So we don't need new infrastructure. New monopoles are discouraged. And then all of these design exceptions can be allowed by the Planning Commission and the city council. So the stealth includes architecture and screening. So these are some, I think, architectural. In this case, it would be, they can be screened within, you know, something that looks like part of the building, like a chimney stack. Here, the antenna are attached as our architectural features to the building. It can be screened as a flagpole or as a tree. You know, there's really an endless variety of screening methods. And these are some that are screened, sort of screened within existing poles. This one is hanging, they can hang these on the wire sometimes if they're small enough and the infrastructure allows it. Can be screened within trees, and then they can be screened as light poles. In this case, that I think the signage and the banner can screen it even further. So the permit system is tiered. And I think the next slide shows that a little better. So there's four tiers. The first one is that Section 6409 that's regulated by the federal code that requires existing modifications to existing facilities to be principally permitted. So that would not come to a commission. And then the strand-mounted, so the second tier, Tier Two, are, can be principally permitted or approved by a zoning administrator without a public hearing, and that would be strand-mounted. Stealth pole mounted in the right-ofway on, on buildings or co-located in locations that are the preferred locations. And then if they want to deviate to a planning commission meeting, it would be a stealth pole-mounted. So the facilities would still be stealth-designed. And then, but then they would be located in one of the least preferred, less preferred locations. And then for non-stealth and the sensitive locations, it would go to a city council. And we did create these label, new labeled permit types that would reflect, that would kind of fit these categories. Then it's not a significant deviation from our existing code. We just added, we labeled the minor use permit. And planning commission could initially use permit, it was no change. And then we added a city council major permit just for the cell facilities. So the least intrusive means, they would need to provide an analysis showing, you know, a site's analysis that could be reviewed by a technical expert hired by the city, and that would be a coverage map that demonstrates the need for those sites. And then there are performance standards. And, you know, the ordinance, I'm sure, you know, if you've had a chance to review it, it's a little bit more detailed. I'm trying to make this a general presentation and not get too bogged down. But there are noise standards, maintenance standards, lighting standards, radio frequency emissions. So again, the FCC limits the, or prohibits cities from denying, denying facilities based on the radio frequency emissions up to a certain point. And so part of the application process, the applicant has to demonstrate that it does comply, that those facilities and the antennas do comply with the FCC radio frequency emission limits. And then removal after not, a period of non-operation. Oh, so that's it. So the recommendation, this would be a first reading if the council chooses to adopt it. And I will turn that back to the council and let you ask questions. We do have the US Cellular representative here, if you have any specific questions that they might answer.
All right. Thank you, Liz. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I have a question for Liz. You said that city properties are encouraged, but Riverwalk is discouraged. So the River Lodge, would that be encouraged or discouraged?
So it's Riverwalk Drive. So it would be the right of way along Riverwalk Drive. And so the River Lodge itself. The ordinance right now calls that Riverwalk Drive. So, yeah, I think technically if you wanted to add a river, the River Lodge, then it would need to be added in specifically. Or you could say city property on Riverwalk Drive. But right now it's just the right of way of Riverwalk Drive. It's not the whole Riverwalk area.
So they could put it on River Lodge property?
Technically, they could, according to the code. They could also put it on Alamo Way.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question that I'd like, when, ask the representative. When they're citing these facilities and we have a number of SCADA systems for water reservoirs, wastewater pumps, wet wells. And in citing that, I wonder about cross radio interference and things such as that. Because it could cause a reservoir to overflow or a pump to not report that the wet well is getting higher and possibly not turn a pump on and overflow. And just wondering how that would work out.
Yeah, each individual facility, so each pole or each antenna will require a permit and that would include a building permit and an encroachment permit. And any, you know, under another city code, there would be a right of way agreement. So through that whole process, through their design and through the permitting and review process. Any, you know, that's something that would need to be analyzed. So there'd be engineering associated with the installation and construction of facilities. And they would definitely have to, you know, confirm that there wouldn't be any kind of interference or conflicts with existing facilities. And through that process, they're probably going to look for locations that don't have a lot of existing infrastructure. That's just going to be easier for them. So I don't know if Merritt probably has maybe a better, more of an engineering explanation than that. I think he's more directly involved in the city, protecting the city's infrastructure. So I don't know if he has anything additional.
Yeah, I mean, there'd be requirements that they submit structural calculations, anything to do with sound. And really what our goal here was, was to put an ordinance in place that was protective of the city. The FCC regulations really limited what the city can do. And so what this ordinance is an example of is, you know, putting regulations on what they can look like, where they can be placed, or more likely where they can't be placed. And really trying to be as restrictive as possible within the framework that's been put on us by the FCC order. So what we did is we looked around at what a number of other cities were doing and, you know, we took from the ones that we found to be the most restrictive. But the really, the driver here was if we received an application that we really are forced within a certain amount of time. I think it's sixty-five days, Liz, the shot clock.
It's sixty-four vacant for new poles, thirty-four, no, it's sixty and ninety, sorry, sixty and ninety. We have not received an application yet. So they've indicated that they would be submitting in the next few months. So we received, we communicated with them through the pre-application process. So that shot clock has not started.
And so I was pleased that the potential applicants waited till we put an ordinance together. So it was a level playing field. The city could put the protections in place. So anyway, that's, that's why we're here. Really, our choices were put together an ordinance that was protective of the city's, you know, protective of what the city saw as concerns or don't have an ordinance and take every application. You don't want to space value and debate those at a council level within the time period allowed.
Okay, well, yeah, I've just, I was curious to hear what the representative had to say because over time, I've seen a lot of different things happen. Different systems, whether wastewater, water, streets, traffic signals. And having had systems go in where they said, oh, this'll interface, this'll work perfect together. And then get it in there and then you find out six months down the road that there is interference. And if that would mean that the city would be responsible for all their hauling, their whole SCADA system or with a wireless carrier. When they find out that the interference is happening, would come alongside and help cover part of that? How was that going to work?
And I'll just say, Mike, we didn't, we didn't, we had, we didn't see anything on that in our research and but maybe Aaron could answer that. I don't know if they've seen that, the frequencies.
Um, yeah, good evening. I'm Aaron Waits from US Cellular. I want to thank you all for your time. There should be no interference because we're not running on the same spectrum levels. So that is a commitment we make that we're not disturbing anything that exists. And we follow all the rules and, you know, our goal really in, in working with Liz and Merritt and what we would like to do upon passage of the ordinance tonight is then set up a meeting and actually go site by site, reviewing everything before we begin our application process. So if there are any areas of concern because of existing infrastructure or various things that kind of, you know, uniqueness to areas, we want to be able to work that out so that we run into no problems once we're actually out there building the seven proposed sites that we have right now. And our goal is then to be submitting in January those sites. But I, thus far, and I've been working in the small cell game for telecom for a little over four years, I've come across no issues with interference into a city's infrastructure.
Okay, well, I know one especially is the Kenmore intersection uses microwave vehicle detection. Which is on a higher frequency spectrum than even the SCADA runs on. So there is an op, you know, you just never know what could happen there.
Sure, and we can work through those specific areas so that we're definitely avoiding any concerns that could pop up. But thus far, like I said, we've never had such issues with interference.
Thank you.
Any other questions either for Liz or Aaron?
Sue, I'm, I'm ready. We, we all follow the mantra when we take our oath as council people, health, safety and welfare. And this is an issue where health is an issue that's going to be impacted. I don't care whether the FCC or people that have been chosen because of their support of the four G and the five G is exactly what they want to hear. But there have been and quoted incidences where there are health issues. And I want to read you something. It's only a paragraph, but it's from the World Health Organization. It says, "According to the World Health Organization, the side effects of the radiation can include increased cancer risk, cellular stress, increase in harmful free radicals, genetic damages, structures and functional changes in the reproductive system, learning and memory deficits, neurological disorders and negative side effects on general well-being, including plants, animals and the environment." So just because the FCC waves that there are no environmental or health effects on human beings is, is unacceptable. Number two is when an organization comes forward and tells us to our face that they are dictatorily demanding that we have to comply to what they want. That raises quite a bit of ire from my direction because I don't like somebody telling me what I have to do when I should in a democracy have a choice. In the, in the information we've been provided, it states that it will not be within three hundred feet of a residential area. I hope to hold their feet to that promise. She just mentioned that there were seven sites. The one thing is missing, even though they could have come up with a preliminary location, is there is no map. There is no comments on what these are going to look at, look like. You refer to stealth appearance. You're more concerned about visual. I'm, I am not in support of this. You could give me the world and I'm still not going to vote for it because I'm more concerned about the public's health. You do not bring this into residential areas of any attempt. If you want to put it into commercial zones that are on a perimeter or the outside of a box and it, and a candy coat and crosses over, that's fine. But you bring it into a residential area, you just made a man enemy number two. So if you want to do the stealth, then you better start making them look like trees. You're not going to do this for cheapy-cheapy. You're going to have to comply at least from one person, one person's viewpoint that it has to look nice. Otherwise, I'm not, I'm not going to be in favor, but I would hope that maybe some of the council members might be following in the same idea. ARCAD was on that pattern, that you're going to have to make these look aesthetically like trees and not like a, just like a toad sitting on a rock. So I, I don't like the idea that the city is being ramrodded. This is totally wrong. And I know they keep on saying that Rancher Cudover got their, the total runaround and they were threatened by legal ramifications. You have started this entire debate the wrong way, folks. US Cellular should just stand back and stop trying to make a buck off the backs of the fortunate citizens. Thank you.
Anyone else have comments or questions?
I have some questions. Liz, I know you mentioned that you don't have to register the antennas, but there will be a map during design. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, I think the register, yeah, yes. So each, each application will have a map showing specifically, you know, the location, absolutely.
I'm just thinking of like if, if, if it was on a pole and the pole got hit and the fire department has to tell somebody to come fix their thing. I mean, things like that. I just want to make sure that we're aware of the locations in those emergency situations.
Yeah, yes. I mean, they would be permitted, so they'd be registered in that regard.
Okay.
And I'm not sure, I kind of feel like that registration isn't, is that an FCC registration, Aaron? Not a city registration?
Yeah, there's FCC obligations. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. My next question is, it's going to sound silly when I ask it, so bear with me. There's wires that power the wireless device, is that correct? So they'll run up through the middle of the pole or where do we draw the power from?
So especially because Liz and Merritt and I have talked about aesthetics, all the wires will make sure everything is inside the pole.
Okay. My last question is regarding the accountability for removal. Is there a bond or something in place? If, if you decide to ever abandon these locations with that ninety day rule of removal, what's the accountability piece to that?
I'm not entirely sure. Sorry, you can go ahead, but I'm not sure what it is with Fortuna.
Yeah, I would need to get back to you on that shortly, if you'd give me a minute.
Thank you.
From council?
I have one more question. Does the city have any say in the design of these or what they're going to look like?
Yes, that's, those are the design standards and that's one of the significant, you know, purposes or features of this ordinance. So when the permit is submitted, it'll be reviewed by staff if they follow the design standards, the location, you know, the preferences. I went over that table, that four tiers. So tier two is basically if they follow the design and locational preferences of the city, then it will be approved administratively if they want exceptions. So they're, you know, they're going to have, their application is going to include full design of, you know, depictions of each and every facility. And so we'll evaluate their submittal, the design, and determine if it falls into that principally permitted or if it would, if they are asking for exceptions, then it would go to either the planning commission or the council, depending on the extent of the exceptions. So, yeah, if they, you know, the, the design, while we don't have like really detailed, specific, you know, it was written kind of flexibly so that you know, there's some flexibility on the turn, on the side of the, the design. And, and then we would work with them to initially to get them to comply, you know, and they're going to want to comply and avoid the public hearing. But if they do really feel like they need exceptions to get their coverage. So, you know, they want to be in a location or they're not able to do the stealth design and they're going to request an exception, then it would go to the planning commission and the council for approval.
So I could add, our goal is, when we have a, the meeting after this passes, is to go through specific designs so that we make sure everyone's comfortable. We don't, you know, we understand the concerns and we want to make sure that what we're doing is what the city would be happy with.
Thank you. Deanna, can you put up our public comment information for us on the screen, please?
I will. And just to bring to your attention, we have somebody on the Zoom meeting right now. It looks like, if I'm pronouncing the name right, Jessa Rigo. And she has indicated she'd like to make a public comment.
Okay, can you go ahead and let her do that?
Hi, is it working?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you guys very much. That is the correct way to say my name. Thank you. I have a couple comments and a couple of questions. I like the preferred locations. I thought those were good ideas. And I like the idea of making sure it won't interfere with the SCADA system. I work on a SCADA system. So I know what kind of, there's sometimes there's just weird blips and it, and it can cause problems, but I'm not an expert in that area. But an idea maybe is, can there be some trial run testing just to see if anything like that happens before a full-on installation goes in? And one place that I think that would be really special to be discouraged location would be on the river for a user of the river, whether they're maybe kayaking or picnicking on the riverbank. And I don't even know if that would be like a good site for engineering, but maybe writing it in because in the future you never know, things might change. People might start want to, some, you know, installing these near the river. But I think the river is a really special, beautiful place that we should make sure to preserve the natural look of. And I had one like really specific question in this PowerPoint location. What, one of the slides was talking about the size requirements and I think it said something like twenty-eight feet in volume. So I was wondering if that is like a cubic feet in volume and three D space or like twenty-eight square feet footprint? And then those other height requirements come in are exactly what that meant. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We appreciate you calling in. Do we have an answer for those questions that she asked?
It's a cubic yard. It's three by three by three. It's just, look, look, look at a box. It's three foot by three foot by three foot. That's the size.
So twenty-eight cubic feet would be the volume that they were talking about. I would just make sure to make that cubic feet then in the final document, if that's what it is.
It did, did say three cubic feet.
Oh, there was something about twenty-eight feet on one of the bullet points.
There was. Liz, do you have that?
Yeah, no, it's
Page eleven, Liz, of the ordinance.
It's which one?
Page eleven.
The definition, yeah, it's included in the definition for small cell. It says feet, no more than twenty-eight feet in volume, so it should say cubic feet.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Hey, I'm glad you got through finally, be able to talk to us. This is Dean Glaser.
Thank you.
You betcha.
The other question is the radio frequency testing prior to installation. I'm not Um, the other question is the radar frequency testing prior to installation, I'm not sure about that. I think Merritt talked about um engineering studies that are, I think would demonstrate um any conflict.
Uh, we're going to have to look into that one, Aaron mentioned that they do register with the FCC and I think they, as she said, they operate on a different spectrum, but I, I. I don't know the answer to that, Liz, so that's something that we could bring back before the second reading and answer that question.
Yeah, and if I could add, I'm not sure the feasibility because of. All that goes into placing and citing the site and getting this, you know, even if it's on an existing structure, that it could really be tested. There's other ways to test the spectrum and, and RF to make sure to account for that, that I think there already are required in. The ordinance that would address that, Jessa.
All right, any other public comments, Siana, is anyone else called in?
Just the last response I had to that, the question from the, the commenter was that we did exclude Riverwalk. We included as one of the discouraged areas, and so. Riverwalk is drive is essentially the whole frontage of the city on the riverfront as well, so we did consider that and include that in the. The discouraged areas that would require a major conditional use permit if we were to site one there.
Merritt, the, the ordinance calls out um the, the discouraged area as the Riverwalk right of way. So, you know, technically someone could apply for a permit on private property. Um, or on the River Ranch Road. That would, could be visible from the river, but you know, these are equivalent of light poles, so I'm not sure if. A view from the river is going to look any different, you know, of a. A cell pole or a light pole. But technically, it's just Riverwalk right of way.
Liz, which is the most likely location where we have poles located, all the poles existing are in the right of way, and so that's where. Likely one would go, so we tried to include that, that was the point of that.
Okay, I agree.
Did anyone else call in, Siana? No other public to make comments?
I don't see any other attendees and I have not received any calls, nobody's come on.
We'll close public comment, we're just happy that we got somebody, thank you for joining us. Okay, and if there's no more questions, does someone like to make a motion and we do have a correction from the original. Packet, I don't know if you guys got that for sure, but it says motion to hold the first reading rather than adopting the ordinance, so if whoever's going to make the motion, we'll make that correction.
Guys, you're slow, come on.
All right, I'll make a motion, first reading to, uh. Do the first reading of ordinance two zero two zero dash seven four four and read it by title only.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, Siana?
Ordinance twenty twenty dash seven four four, in ordinance of the city of Fortuna, amending title seventeen zoning regulations of the Fortuna municipal code. Adding section seventeen point zero six point two two zero, small wireless communications facilities. And amending section seventeen point zero seven point zero zero four administration, council member Glazer?
No.
Council member Johnson?
Yes.
Council member Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. And I will agree with Dean, it is very frustrating to be dictated by the state as to what we can and cannot do in our own city. But by not adopting this ordinance, it will just make matters worse in my opinion, so by. Having an ordinance, at least we have what little control is offered to us out there, so. Moving on, our next item is a business loan to Eric Allen for fourteen thirty four Ronerville Road and lease a vacant city parcel on Ronerville Road. Staff report, please.
Yes, so this is one that came to us, we weren't expecting, but this is a subject that um. Eric, Eric Allen's been very patient, but this property has been in the city spotlight for a long time. Staff is recommending that the city council approve a business loan for twenty five thousand to Eric Allen for the renovation of the commercial property at fourteen thirty four Ronerville Road. And authorize the city manager to lease the adjacent. City owned parcel. Property located at this location comprises of large part of what was historically the commercial district developed in eighteen hundreds as Ronerville. Ronerville predated the incorporation of the city of Fortuna and was ultimately annexed as part of the city. A large portion of Ronerville was lost to a fire in eighteen, in the eighteen nineties and again in nineteen forty. Historical photos in the vicinity um are included in the staff report, the first ones from the thirties as well as when the city did a new sidewalk project in twenty thousand sixteen. And then one that's close to the time of its current location. Um, at, at, in twenty, I believe twenty nineteen. The property remained in commercial use for several decades until the death of the prior owner in twenty sixteen and was formerly a small market and ultimately an antique store. Two of the buildings were used for residential purposes. The prior owner did not keep the buildings in good repair and a lot of trash and debris was stored within the outside of the buildings for several years. The city declared it a nuisance in two thousand eight and it consistently required the attention of the city to make sure that it did not remain a nuisance. Eric Allen purchased the property in twenty nineteen and ma- has made a comprehensive effort to remove the trash and debris and make cosmetic repairs to the buildings. Additional work is still needed to install a new roof and make other structural repairs to the building. Mr. Allen has a long term goal of maintaining the existing residential uses and ultimately the restoration of commercial use for the main building. Mr. Allen inquired as to whether or not the project would be eligible for a loan about at the same time that the city was doing the business resiliency loan program. Uh, to support businesses struggling with it during the COVID nineteen emergency. Although this project did not fall into the business resiliency loan program and wouldn't qualify for that. Staff thought that the proposed loan for this project could improve the potential for commercial use of this site in the future and to facilitate the rehabilitation of a long term nuisance property. Mr. Allen requested that the city loaning twenty five thousand at an interest rate of two and a half percent with deferred payments for a period of one year. With the entire amount amortized over thirty years payable in ten years. Funds for this loan cup would come from fund eight thirty six, which are proceeds from a past industrial development grant. That had the purpose of setting up revolving loan fund to encourage business retention, expansion of existing businesses and job retention and creation. Staff feels that this relatively small investment would be instrumental for Mr. Allen to restore the long term viability of these buildings for commercial use. Uh, the Redwood Region Economic Development Corporation has agreed to help underwrite and service the loan. Additionally, Mr. Allen requested that the city consider the lease of the city owned vacant parcel immediately to the south of, south of the subject parts, parcel to provide overflow parking. This parcel is currently vacant, could not be developed as it consists primarily of a creek channel riparian habitat in a small gravelled area that has been used for staging and parking in the past. The city has no current use for this parcel other than for pu- potential future drainage related work for which the property should be retained by the city. If acceptable to council, the city manager would develop a lease and a fair market amount for the lease of that, for the use of that property. The provisions would be included in the lease to protect the riparian habitat, maintain the vegetation on the property to avoid a nuisance condition. And to not encumber the site with storage equipment, materials or other items that would not support the renovation of the buildings. The lease would be similar to the lease that the city has in other locations such as the alley um adjacent to Hunan Village Restaurant, that's leased from the city for parking. So with regard to the financial impact, the city would provide the twenty five thousand from the fund eight thirty six, the business loan fund and collect two and a half percent. On that amount over the term of the loan, the current balance of fund eight thirty six is approximately five hundred thousand with anticipa- anticipated proceeds. From the sale of the city owned property at three twenty Main Street in the amount of approximately three hundred seventy five thousand to be added to this over the next, sometime within the next five years. So the worst case for the city is that if there is a foreclosure on the property, that the city could lose a principal loan to Mr. Allen. Uh, in a rough estimate, the value of the lease for the vacant lot would be relatively small amount, approximately two hundred dollars per year, and what I did was I based that on. The number of parking spots that were there at Hunan, uh, we'd have to look a little closer at that, and I think there is about. You know, one twelfth the number of spots, there should be approximately two spots at the vacant parcel, so we base the value on that. Um, so with that, we do have um Eric on the line, he did prepare about a six slide presentation, I don't know if the council would like to see, just hear from Mr. Allen. Um, directly, uh, or if they'd like to ask questions about the staff report first.
Let's hear from Mr. Allen, since he went to the trouble to do a presentation and he's joining us, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, uh, so Siana, could you set it up so I can share my screen, I, or do you, would you like to share the presentation that Mr. Allen provided? So Eric, if you wanted to mute yourself, I'm going to hand it over to you and if there's anything that I missed in there. Um, now would be your time to kind of explain your project, run through your presentation and, and anything else you want to tell the council before they ask some questions.
Merritt, if you could share it, I don't have that presentation on this desktop.
Let me pull it up right now and then Eric, you can um, you can let me know when you want me to advance the slides.
Good, sure, thanks Merritt, and that was a great uh staff report, I thought that summed it up pretty good. And uh, so yeah, thank you to the mayor and council and staff for having me and listening to me. Um, yeah, Merritt and I've been um communicating and he brought the project. Forward for the roof and the adjacent lot and I'm excited to uh move forward. I've had the property for about a year and um, we've removed a lot of. A lot of trash and the end goal is to restore it back to sort of an original condition and. Um, get some sort of business in there, so. That's a, that's just a sketch I did for the possible, you know. A possible facade look um with the smaller windows and we'll see, so someday. So uh, we have the plan um lined out and this is a slideshow I've had from before. Um, you can see the items that we've gotten through and coming up is straightening the foundation. Um, working on places that have a little structural um integrity issues that we can um shore up. And I'm working closely with some engineers to help do that. And then the new roof is the big one, once we get the building straight um to keep the water out and get it into a shell condition, so. It can be expanded in the future to a, a number of different businesses um and to keep developing it.
Sorry, Eric, let me get that back here.
No problem, so then um, we've gotten through a decent amount of the work and uh. It'll probably stay just shop space for now as a support to the, the buildings. Um, and have you seen the pictures, you've all seen the pictures of what this place looks like and we'll get to one later, but uh. So we, when we cleaned it, we went through everything, got the items off here, um, removed. Probably about, I'd say ten tons, fifteen tons worth of stuff out of the buildings. And the last thing we had is stacking the lumber um and seeing what's useful and not. So the, these are the buildings, if you're not familiar with them, um, all the way to the right is where I am now. Um, and then the two commercial buildings are in the center, the two blue buildings, and then that's a residence to the left. Um, and then that small shed with the doors falling off, that is a small shed. But they all have that um square facade on them, and that's how it looked, that's out my car window right when I was purchasing it. Um, some people look at it and think, why would someone want to try that? And I have a, have an appreciation for the old growth redwood, the history and location. Believe it or not, it was in my price, price range, um, there is income potential there, has shop space. Health benefits is just because uh I work a desk job and it's a, it's a physical um project. It, it's fairly limited, the amount of. People that would try to do this, but I have a certain set of resources, including, you know, family and work connections that I think I can take this on. And uh, there's other compliance reasons with the building being old where it makes it a cheap for someone like me to, to get it. Bring it back to working condition. So this is just uh, we're taking a picture tour, um, to the left you see the floor joists, the mill cut redwood from the eighteen hundreds. Um. Nice full dimension lumber, and then to the right you see the roof from in the attic. And that's one pitch of one of the roofs that has old redwood shingle and that needs to be replaced, you can see the light coming through. And we currently have plastic on it um to cover it through the winter as we uh lift the building, but that's uh. That's where we're at right now, and that's what the loan would be for. This is the lot next door, um, it's just a. Uh, the buildings that I'm here about are to the right of this. And it would just be a place I could, you know, maintain, play frisbee, uh, put some garden beds. But leave it open and accessible for the city and uh, the goal with this project in general is to. Make it, the whole place look nice and, and bring it back to a, you know, a quaint and. Pleasant, pleasant looking area. Here's some more wood, that's me holding up a two by four up against the, some floor joists, just to give you some scale and the beams, and like I said, these. Uh, redwood timbers were cut uh in the eighteen hundreds as far as I can, um. As far as I can. So we're at about ten percent, you know, a lot of stuff is still ahead, but we've. We've got it and um, it's moving right along, so these are just items we still need. Roofing material would of course be substituted for um paying to have professional roofers come and do it. And just get the project done and get the momentum and protect the investment that's already inside, um, as, you know, being cleaned out and such. And uh. So this is just little view, this is a little part we cleaned up. And to the left you'll see a, that column, that's I guess the old mail slot in the window. Service window for the old post office back when it was the Eel River Post Office. And uh, that's a picture someone was kind enough to give me of the, their family when, when they owned it. So once again, thank you everyone for listening and. Yeah, I'm excited to move forward, thanks.
Thank you, Eric, does anyone have any questions for either Merritt or Eric?
This is Dean again, um, be, please be patient with me. Um, I spoke to Merritt a couple of months ago about the fact that the very south little building that's painted blue. Um, is actually on city property and uh. There was a survey done when David Burtz was the thorn in our city's side for fifteen years. To actually find the true footprint of that building. And when that survey was done, it was discovered that, that entire little shed, which has now been renovated, uh, is on city. So there's an issue right there, um, and I told, told Merritt that if Doug Strel, who was former mayor. And a council member for many years, he has that knowledge and I have that knowledge and that has to be resolved before it goes any further for. What the building's going to have done to it. Um, I like the idea of using twenty five thousand dollars from a fund that we have for a recycling business loan. But I do not like the comment that if, if the building is foreclosed on, then we lose the $25,000. That is unacceptable. Now, we, we put this, we put a very strong removal of $17,000 to the Chamber of Commerce because we were trying to balance the budget. I really don't care where the money comes from. It is taxpayers' money. It is our obligation to protect any kind of investment or loan that the city does to a business person. So that verbiage has to change. As for allowing the owner of that structure to put debris or whatever on city property, he has done this before. And the council never voted on it or approved on it. Somehow or another, staff went above our heads. If I perceive this the right way, went above our heads and allowed him to do that. I don't like blight on city property. Most people don't even know the city owns that, but I know it's owned by the city. And I would actually support the city following through on making sure that if it is used, there are some protocols followed. It's mentioned that for overflow for, for people coming as customers. If that's the case, then there needs to be some more verbiage in there to remove the liability and indemnify the city of any kind of legal ramifications. If somebody parks their car and it gets damaged, guess who's gonna get sued? If we don't have that verbiage in there, we become the liable person, not the person who is leasing it. So there needs to be some more fine details being done. It's a great idea. I support anything being done to that building. Like I said, for 15 years, it was the scourge of the nemesis of David Burtz. And he has passed away. That history is only in the memories of a few people that know it. So good things can come about, but we still need to protect the city's investment. So that if something happens to that investment, we get to place a lien on that APN number and recover our money. I mean, otherwise it's a wrong deal and we need to fine tune it way more before we do any more discussion on it. Thank you.
I have a comment. I talked to Merritt a little bit about this.
Should I respond to Dean first?
Go ahead.
Thank you Dean. I appreciate your concerns and I agree with both of them. If, you know, some, the correct verbiage to make sure we have a clear understanding and that we make sure it looks good in the end. And that's the goal I'm going for. And as far as the property line, I do know where a property stake is and from what I can tell from the maps and when I've had the city out before, that the property line is outside of that little blue shed. And it comes up to the face of the building. I mean, it's only a few feet off the side and about an inch off the front. So, but I, I do believe that that, that is in the property line. I can see the, the ground post with the little yellow top and the pinhole in it.
So this council member Glazer, for, you know, we can look into this. I, I don't recall discussing the, the shed being on, on the city property, but it does go to the face of the building. So that's something we could look at. And then I could discuss with Eric, with Eric, the potential for a promissory note with a deed to trust on one of the parcels. Also, so we hear your point and I can, we can look at how we modify it.
Yeah, there, there was, there was, when it was done, surveyed, there was a great deal of difficulty trying to find existing markers. But talk, we could talk to Doug Strel. Like I said, the three of us can get together and actually resolve this, but it was discovered. It's our, it has to be archived by somebody that has it upstairs in our, in our boxes to valid, validate that. Now, if that stake was changed in a more current level within the last five years, then I have a problem with that. So yeah, I, I want this to be legal.
Yeah, council member Glazer, we, we have an accurate survey from when we did the 2016 roadway project on Rotterville Road. So we have that and I'd be happy to share that with you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Dean. Sorry Tammy, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, that's okay. I'm strongly in support of cleaning up those buildings and I like your plans. But I was talking to Merritt about, I, when I first opened my business, I got a redevelopment loan, which is something similar to this. But the way the loan worked is you did part of the project and then the city paid you the money instead of giving you all the money upfront. And that way it's, it's insured to the city that that money is being used the way it was supposed to be used. And I would encourage the, the loan to be done that way, paid out as needed, up to $25,000.
Okay, thank you. And that would mean that I would pay part of that money first and then being reimbursed?
No.
Or just show materials?
Submit the bill and then the city pays the bill.
Oh, okay.
So you don't have to put out any money yourself. You just, when you get the work done, then the bill's paid. It's dispersed out when needed.
Okay. And then if that were the case and the city is approving all the bills, if there was work that would be beneficial to say the foundation or something that I could, you know, relate to the project and to, because we have to do the foundation before we do the roof. So I want to be on schedule for that. So would things be approved on a case by case basis? Say if I did bring in some sort of foundation.
Eric, if I could stop you for one second, at, at this point, I'm gonna bring it back to the council and, you know, so I, I hear, you know, we're not gonna change things yet for the opinion of one council member. So we're just gonna, if you just, let's get through the council member comments and then we'll bring it back at the end and I'll, I'll take instruction. I can work with you on how we handle it.
Okay, thanks Merritt.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I have a comment and question. It looked like I saw Eric nod his head yes, that we could just simply encumber one of the APNs with the $25,000 first deed to trust. And he appeared to be agreeable with that. So that would solve the issue of having to monitor where, where, when and how he spends his money. So the city can just grant the $125,000, the $25,000 one-time loan and then let the property owner go about his business. I like the idea. I'm super in favor of the project. Eric, I think you're doing a great job with the buildings. Really excited to see somebody take that on because I wouldn't do it for a hundred bucks. So I think that's the, probably the simplest way to approach this is just become a first deed holder or a first note holder. One question I had for Merritt, maybe this map is, I'm looking on the parcel map that was provided in the staff report and maybe this map is before the city annexed this property or Camden Heights into the city limits, but it says right on the parcel, the question that it's the county of Humboldt. Is that just because it's an old map?
Yeah. So when that area was incorporated, formerly was county of Humboldt and then it transferred to the city, much like Drainage East Vance. And everything that is in the areas of incorporation typically transfers.
Okay.
And I do have the APN map, which I'd be happy to, to pull up if, if the council does want to see it.
I think.
Go ahead Mike.
I was gonna say, I, I'm happy to see the project. It's, it will be a big improvement for the neighborhood and as far as retail goes, there's a lot of residents up there that that would provide some opportunities instead of having to go all the way down to the Redwood Village Mall or Strong's Creek. There could be some retail in there. That would be great. And as far as, I know that Alan Baird, I believe, did a survey when the city and Dave Burtz were at odds. So he might have some records from that. And then I remember doing the, the right of way survey for the 2016 STIP project that was done there. So we have stuff to go off of regarding property lines and right of ways and it's, it's our, it's in possession, just have to find it. So, but yes, I commend you for taking that on. I mean, his, his fingers, as far as having distributing his stuff, even got so far as to my next door neighbor's garage. So he, he spread out wide when he got to going. Morning Stone was everywhere. Thank you.
And I just, one more thing for the council too is, you know, I think the pictures, I don't even think were the most recent that, that Eric shared with you. It actually looks a lot better. He's done some of the boardwalk repairs and two of the buildings have been painted since he showed that last painting. So actually it looks a lot better. And if any of the council had seen the inside of those buildings beforehand, you couldn't even walk through them. They were just packed full. And to see those empty, to see the ones with the residential use going forward, the, you know, the old Sausier building being completely empty, you know, that seemed like an impossible task. And so, you know, Eric's really downplaying the, the effort that he's put into it already at 10%. That I might estimate it at more than that.
Any other comments or questions? All right. And we'll open public comments. Siana, if you would put the information on our screen, please. If anyone would like to comment, the instructions are on the screen. You can join our meeting. So seeing no one call in or join us, do we have a motion?
Mayor Long, could I just make a couple of points before you make a motion? I, I guess just, you know, to, to really separate it, one of, one of the things I would like to hear, I think it's important that we, the money remain flexible for Mr. Allen and I think it would be difficult if we got in a situation for reimbursement. So if I could just get direction from the council, if, if we can secure the loan by a promissory note, a deed to trust, I think that would protect the city's interest against, you know, either the parcels that, you know, whichever the parcels is less encumbered. Then that would, the city would have some assurance of being paid back. And then just to take the second part of the motion and, you know, whether, whether or not specifically if the council has questions, but if the council, council is comfortable with me negotiating the terms and value of the lease or if you want to see it back. I guess those are two questions that I, that I have before you make the motion.
I would be comfortable with you negotiating. What's everyone else think?
I'm comfortable with that, how it's worded.
Nicky'd do a fine job.
I, I voiced my concerns and it's up to the staff to follow through or do whatever they want to do. So it's in the, the good, good conscience for the city.
And I have heard the concerns. It's all work with Mr. Allen to make sure that, you know, we don't have another unsightly mess there and that it's kept, it's well-kept and neat. And we'll include those provisions in the lease.
I, I had one thing I was gonna, I, I forgot to read off my little prompter notes. That little Humboldt Transit Authority bus location. Is the city willing to want to actually have people park there if there's not enough room on, on Rotterville Road to actually park on city property? Is that gonna be, something could be done in tandem with Eric or is that a separate, separate topic that we just shouldn't touch on tonight?
Separate talk, topic, I, I think would be better to take that up separately.
Okay.
All right. So based on all of our conversations and our comments, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a business loan secured by a note and first deed to trust in the amount of $20,000 to $5,000 to Eric Allen for the renovation of the property, commercial property at 1434 Rotterville Road and authorize the city manager to establish terms of, and lease adjacent, establish terms for a lease adjacent vacant city-owned parcel.
I'll second that.
All right. Thank you Jeremy. Mike, Siana.
Council member Glazer.
Yes ma'am.
Council member Johnson.
Yes.
Council member Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Thank you for all the work you've done so far, Eric. We'll look forward to seeing more improvements.
All right, thank you.
All right, we are, city manager's report, Merritt.
Okay. So I just have a few items to report tonight, but one of them is that we're nearly complete with negotiations on our wastewater contract that the council approved at the last wastewater meeting for our wastewater improvement project with Jacobs Engineering. That's taken some time in resolving the scope items. So we're moving forward with that. We're currently considering options on how to best modify our franchise agreement for disposal and solid, solid waste disposal and recycling with recology. And so we'll be bringing something back to council at the next, one of the next two meetings before the end of the year. We also submitted a $300,000 grant application to the Community Power Resiliency Grant Program. If successful, it would result in the installation of a new solar array of the city's wastewater treatment plant that would offset our energy use there by about 10% of the current power consumption. So we use a lot of power to move water at the plant. So that would be a pretty significant savings if we could land that grant. The grant application that we submitted for the cell generation incentive program to put batteries at a few of the sites within the city, that is moving forward. It's in the design phase. We still don't have assurance, but it's looking for, like that's gonna be going forward. So that'd be a great project to have the batteries coupled with the solar from the Community Power Resiliency Grant. I began meeting monthly with the Chamber of Commerce in the Fortuna Business Improvement District. I really want to start taking a closer look at our MOU and ways that the city can work better with both F bid and the Chamber of Commerce to support the mission of each one of those organizations. So I had a great first meeting with Diana Rios and then I had a really good first meeting with Renee Lindsay and Kelly Isaacs in with the chamber. And so I'm, I'm encouraged that we're really gonna be able to work together and push that. That's something that I haven't focused on as much in the past and I'm looking forward to as we move forward. And then lastly, Mercer Fraser is nearly finished with the Jamison Creek project. They will be paving tomorrow and potentially Wednesday and then removing the detour signage and opening up the road no less later than Thursday morning. So again, I just want to thank the public for their patience with that project. I went out there today and they got it up to grade. The sidewalk's in, it's prepped for paving. So two more days, just bear with us and, and thanks everybody again for having to detour around. Really appreciate the patience from the public on this project. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you Merritt. Any questions for Merritt?
I'll just comment that I had, was up at Open Door today and when I pull out, I just automatically looked for traffic even to the right. And I saw the rollers and paving machine being unloaded up there. So I thought, oh, good news.
Don't stop looking for traffic just because they weren't there in the past. They, they will be back.
And the other thing, you made a comment about working with SHN and Jacobs. Have you shaken up the seismic task order as you were talking about?
Yeah. So we're, we're, we've talked with some of the agencies. We're trying to get a better, better handle on what we're gonna include in the scope of work. And, and so we're getting a better handle on that and that'll help us with decide which items to include in the contract and which ones not to. So hopefully we can do a little bit less than was expected.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to future agenda items, anyone? Hearing that, we will move on to city council reports. Dean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Guess what tomorrow is? It's the end of this, this enduring battle to be able to stay awake, listen to the news, find what you want as a positive note and also recognize the negative notes. But one of the things that's very important that directly impacts business people, but it would also impact residential owners is the 1978 Howard Jarvis Bill that was voted on by the citizens of the city. This is Fortuna, the citizens of Fortuna, as well as the rest, the residents of California. And that was to protect the residential assessed value of your home and your business. The first attack on that is Proposition 15 is a tricky wordage that does not mention anything about the 1978 proposition. Please do not be tricked. Vote no. I will allow Tammy to talk about the yes on Measure G. If you have not turned in your ballot, go down to raise and turn it in or go to the VFW building on Main Street and turn it in there. That the VFW building is also the location in Fortuna for people that choose to vote in person. That is the place to go. There is no other place to go. So, so be vigilant as a voting citizen and a citizen of the state of California. So, be vigilant as a voting citizen and a citizen of the state of California. I totally embrace this election and hope that everybody else embraces it 100% as well. There's nothing to report on Redwood Coast Energy Authority. I do want to bring up a point, that is, this is the first time I've ever personally attacked a news agency, but what was done by Redwood News yesterday to under-report what was done as a political statement by a group of individuals from Fortuna and the neighboring cities to say that there was only 100 vehicles that participated, and that was a direct, blatant, liberal bias statement. And you people should be ashamed of yourselves for being so narrow-minded and diminishing an important freedom of speech that was done by our citizens. Shame on you. I don't want to have that happen again, and if it does happen again, if I happen to be in office, I will call you on it again personally. Shame, shame, shame on you, the owner of that business. Finally, my wonderful thing that I like to say every time, God bless America, God bless our troops, God bless all the people that have gone through this diminishing quality of life because of the virus. We will prevail. We will have a future to look forward to. We will be wonderful people. We'll all be united together as Americans. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Dean. Mike?
Thank you. And it's been a busy couple of weeks passed, and this week also with some HCOG, a lot of HCOG things. We're in the middle of finding a new HCOG executive director, as you heard Marcella say, that she is retiring in a couple of months, and it's not an easy job to fill that position. But we have gotten some applicants, scored the applications, and have our first round of interviews on Thursday. And then, on Friday, we're still working to find some targets for the regional transportation plan, looking at climate change and usage, bet ways to, as we went through the unmet transit needs tonight, ways to encourage people to use the transit system where possible, and it's just a lot of things happening there. I would like to say that it has been a crazy few months, as Dean mentioned, with the COVID-19 things, and we have seen, I believe it's over 400 executive orders put into place by our governor, and today, he was actually called, there was a court case last week, and today the judge ruled on there and said that he overreached his authority, that we have a constitution and a legislative body, a judicial body, and an executive body, and he combined all three under his own authority. So, I don't know where that's going to go yet, but the initial ruling was made. He has a chance to appeal it, as we all know, and we'll see what happens. But 400 executive orders in six months or nine, seven months just seemed a little excessive to a couple of the assemblymen, and they took them to court. And that's all I have to say about that. I will report out about our, what I can about our HCOG things. And thank you, and take it away, Jeremy.
All right, Jeremy, you're up.
All right, so, thanks, everybody, for letting me have the spotlight with regards to the Recreation Committee. I, and all, I think all of us were able to visit the ribbon-cutting last Friday for the new bike park in Newburgh. It was so cool seeing all those kids out there on bikes and skateboards and scooters, and, I mean, they were all being very respectful, really enjoying the grounds. It was a neat presentation from its infancy to its current configuration. Like to give a shout out to some of the original founding members. I don't know all of them, so I know I'm in a, you know, not making everybody happy, but I know of two, Savannah Almond and Cody Hurst, were seventh and eighth graders at Totty Thomas that first came up with that idea. And I know Wind Construction had a big help in creating the dirt and the ramps and all that in its inception. But where it's come to at this point, with over $25,000 worth of improvements from volunteers in our community, just speaks volumes for Fortuna, and I couldn't be more proud of that finished project there. I want to commend Merritt and Cameron for partnering with those volunteers, Wallon Construction, Humboldt Redwood, and the, I don't know the proper name of the Mountain Bike Association, Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association, or something to that effect. What a phenomenal job, and what a much-needed facility here in Humboldt, and specifically Fortuna. And then, donation from Sporting Cycle of a whole stack of helmets for kids that were there that day without helmets, that we want to keep everybody safe. There's a whole list of rules to abide by when you're using the facility, includes wearing head safety equipment. So, please do your best to adhere to those. If you have a need for a helmet, talk to a grown-up. I'm sure any one of us would say we're happy to donate. Besides that, with Fbid is my other piece of news. The, there's a brand-new website that's just been launched. I encourage you all to visit fortunabusiness.com. It's neat to see one of Fortuna's own have a passion for building websites. Emma Coleman was hired to build Fortuna Business Improvement District's new website, and it's phenomenal. It has tabs all the way across the top that talk about getaway giveaway. We're encouraging, through a grant from the Humboldt Lodging Alliance, out-of-towners to apply for getaway giveaway, and it's promoting them to come to Humboldt, come to Fortuna, and support local and spend money here. Some of the giveaway items are fishing trip for crab in December, another rock cod fishing trip, many gift cards for local businesses to get people in the door spending money, and beds and heads and beds with the idea of them traveling here just to shop. They also have, they are doing the Shop Fortuna for the holidays again, starting on November 28th through December 21st. The prize is cash, it's not Fortuna bucks anymore, but it's cash. So, spend your money local and save your receipts and turn them in, and with chances to win money for the holidays, the prize will be awarded on December 22nd. Let's see. I guess there's been a little bit of parking issues. Fbid's working in collaboration with the police department to ask business owners and their employees not to park in the two-hour parking spaces, so that there's more space for downtown merchants to have customer parking. And so, they're working together to help educate those property owners and those business owners. There's also another Shop Fortuna marketing campaign, a new shop local campaign throughout the county is being, is happening, and Fortuna's a part of that. So, choose Humboldt, Shop Fortuna as their hashtags. And finally, wanted to let you know, where is it? Humboldt May Pop-Up Shop. So, Fbid is seeing and noticing a thing where home-based businesses that do things that are like craft fairs during this time of year especially, need a place for an outlet so they can still continue to earn a living with their crafts and so forth. So, they're considering asking the Fbid Board to create a space somewhere in a vacant building on Main Street or somewhere in the town to have those home-based business vendors a place to set up and sell their goods. So, that's something else that's being worked on, and I'll report back how that turns out. So, that's all I have for the business side of things on my reports, and I just hope everybody is staying happy, healthy, and safe, and good luck tomorrow.
Thank you, Jeremy. Tammy?
Thank you. I wanted to thank Jeremy for his report on the pump track down at the park. It was so nice to go down there and see all of those kids down there with their smiling faces, just really enjoying it. Also, wanted to add Mercer Frasier to that list of people that you had. Anyway, it's just, it's so nice to see them down there outside enjoying that and having such a good time, especially after being locked up for so long. I attended a Chamber Lunch Mixer today. It was a really good presentation by Enick from the Fortuna Police Department on cybersecurity. Very educational, very good program today. And tomorrow is Election Day. It's down at the Veterans Building. They'll be open from 7:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m. You can turn in your ballots that you have there, or you can go there to vote in person. Remember how important Measure G is to the city, and if you haven't voted yet, Measure G has done a lot of good for the city, or Measure E, which will now be Measure G when it's renewed. It's done a lot of good things for the city, so please remember that when you're voting. And I think that was everything I had on my list, so back to you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Tammy. So, yeah, you guys already mentioned the bike park, but it just has a really special place in my heart, so it was really cool to be there and to see all of that, and just very, very thankful for all those people who worked together with the donations to make it be what it is today, and had a couple of kids that were in the original Totty Thomas group come up to me and introduce themselves, and they definitely have grown up, because it's been several years since we initially started that whole project. So, it's nice to see that it just keeps getting better and better. As a council, we got Merritt's evaluation taken care of. That was a big chore that we had on our list, and we were very pleased to get that off our plate and to, we're just very thankful for our city manager that we have right now. I did get to go on a tour with Merritt and Mike and Aaron and go over to see our property that we're trying to acquire for our wastewater treatment plant. That was an interesting tour, and I appreciate the time that you took to take us over there, I attended an executive meeting for redact. We didn't have our regular meeting. It was canceled because there wasn't enough on the agenda. If you still have questions on Measure G, you're not sure what it is, visit our Yes on G Facebook page, and please vote yes. We really need to renew this for the good of the city, and our little theme was Fortuna is worth it, so please check Yes on G when you are filling out your ballot. We do have a closed session. It is a conference with real property negotiator pursuant to Section 54956.8 of the Government Code, vacant land along Il River and 1320 Riverwalk Drive. Negotiating parties are the city manager, Merritt Perry, for the city of Fortuna, and Troy Land is negotiating party. Under negotiation is a price in terms of payment, so we are going to adjourn to closed session, and we appreciate all of you that joined us and that may be watching. So, we need a motion to adjourn the closed session.
Motion to adjourn to closed session.
Well, second.
All right, we have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.